It's about seven o'clock, we're all standing in the place. Mr. Harper, you get the location.
That's correct. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for the privilege that we have to live in this free country where we can freely meet, we can freely share our opinions and thoughts. And in spite of all that's going on, I thank you that you are still in control. Pray God that you would give wisdom to our city council this evening. I pray that you would give them insights. Pray, Father, that you would also give them a spirit of working together to accomplish much for this city. I pray that you'd watch over our city and our country as well. Thank you for the soldiers that so faithfully serve our country, for our police officers, our firemen, all who took help to take care of us. I thank you for your provision of that. Praise all of us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America to the Republic which sustains one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Almira Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here. If you're ready, allow me to look over the August 16th meeting minutes and special call meeting of August 26, 2016 minutes. No, no change on here. It says I was absent, I was 32 minutes late, so if you write that in, I'll second that.
In a minute, if you'd like, when you came in on the third page.
It's fine. As far as August 26, 2016, we also have a motion on that. All favor on both minutes. Got it?
Huh?
All right. Father.
I'm sorry, your side?
Me. It's going to Mr. Sports, Mr. Harris, and gentlemen.
I'm in the utility section. We've been having a lot of problems. It seems like every sewer line we dig up, a sewer situation we get into, we run into very, very shaggy work. And we've spent a heck of a lot of time having to redo things. As far as, I'm going back to August 16th on something here. We had a little situation with drainage over on 10, 12, 19 jail. Dogwood Trace is also concerned 3002 and 3006. Gracie Anne, I spoke with Daniel Williams yesterday. He's actually the premier builders. He's actually going to be doing the regrading over there in order to get all that drainage situation taken care of. And that was for 3002, since he was the final grader on it.
That's a new house in the mill.
Yeah, that's the one on the far end down there that will chat all the drainage issues. I don't know. We have actual electric service is going to be raising our rates. It's not going to be that much for all the street lights that they handle starting January 2017. It's going to be $550 for energy usage, $650 for what's called an investment charge in the traffic lights. And it's going to be approximately $60 per month, which is comprised of energy usage of 50 and $10 for an investment charge. So they're only growing up maybe about $10 a month. And that's just all I have right now.
Going to comments, Mr. Johnson.
Well, Kellie's station of your imposing, so really all I have to look at is just the imbalance and their combination pretty good.
Going to parts, Greaser.
October 22nd, 10-6, we'll be having our Smoke on the Rigs Festival, which will be our third year, Riz Top Station. We had blowups over 30 vendors, various food vendors. Mission's $5 per person, covered $500 free. And all the proceeds we wish this year will go to Waltoqua PSO. Help them with reading programs and stuff like that.
For Waltoqua?
What'd you say? What'd you say?
What'd you say?
Proceed from there. They'd be going to Waltoqua PTO. It's a PSO. They're going to be hosting cornhole tournament. They're going to have, we're going to have pumpkin painting competitions, stuff like that. They've got a reading program they're trying to fund. It's about $1,700 a month, from what we're gathering. It's accelerated reading, and that's what they're wanting to, just trying to get behind or something. But that's all I have.
Going to LA, LA ESO.
This month's current balance is $37,563.60.
We don't have anything on streets, police and fire, or any.
Now, fire department had 24 calls last month. And for the lease court, I'd like to ask Chief Ryan to service a head site.
We had 165 citations, 184 violations, 98 calls for service, two domestics, six arrests, 35 reports, two drug charges, seven accident reports, and four driving or suspended. Only other thing is I've got is, I did buy ammo for all the new duty weapons that you guys approved a couple of months ago. That all came in. Talked to the Dodge dealer cars, which I should send everybody a picture of them. One of the new cars, it was getting close to being complete. They should be in time for the Volkswagens to go back, which the Volkswagens go back November the 1st. The cars are projected to come in middle October. He promised me at least the last week of October. Only they were really waiting on the push bompers, which have to be ordered, then made, then shipped.
So we'll get all six at one time?
Yeah, he told me, of course, mine would be done first because it might get a cage or a push bumper. The two night shift cars, which were demo cars, they'll probably be complete before the other three. But for payment purposes, I thought we just pick them all up at one time. That's really all I have.
We did want to add to the agenda this evening some items we want to sell through the lease co-program to build that fund up or to help purchase the lease cars. So when the time comes, if we could add that to the agenda, please.
You all ready to go out?
Well, I can. Josh, would you like to tell us about the generators that we have and the program and what we think they might do?
We've had a gentleman come up to look at the bulldozer and has inquired about the generators and apparently that's an hot item right now. We've got four. We've used them for various operations at the park and stuff like that. Brown and I have talked and would like to probably surplus three of those, really keep them one for whatever it means they might have. So I don't have the item numbers. I didn't know if that mattered because we haven't really decided. But if we go ahead and just make a motion, I know we need to add to the agenda, but can't we even do that without the serial numbers of those items?
Okay. You can surplus three. Or?
I'd like to make the motion to add the lease to surplus three. I'll have a second.
Okay.
All that later. I'd like to make the motion to surplus three of the armored generators to put on gov bills. Uh, surplus three of our generators to have a surplus to gov bills. All that later.
All right. Planning examine, Mr. Harris.
We had nothing for planning examine this month.
All right. It's going to business board, senior board. All right, it's going to public hearing, ordinance 2016, 112 personal rules and regulations. Also a public hearing, second reading, ordinance 2016, 113, a meeting budget ordinance, State Street. I'll make a motion to open, close the meeting and open up the public hearing. Are you all ready to go out? If you'd like to have any questions, Mr. Stevens.
I'm Stephen Harper, 106, in the middle of the court. On the 1, I didn't realize 113 was going to be on for a second reading, preparing for the public hearing. But since it is, what is that for? We're adding to the budget, to the streets budget. What is the money going to be used for?
The boom mower.
That's not a public hearing.
That's not that one?
No, the public hearing is the personal one.
Oh, I thought you said both of them. No?
No, just the personal one.
Okay. Stephen Harper says no.
That is, that is for the boom mower, which is just last one, is to cut our right ways back.
Okay. Well, I won't ask it.
Yeah, it's just a budget, it's just a budget amendment.
Okay.
For a change, so I'm going to go back. Any other questions on these two? Make your motion to bring the board back to the agenda. You're a second.
Second.
All right. Make your motion to pass ordinance 2016, 112, personal rules and regulations and ordinance 2016, 113, meeting budget ordinance, budget ordinance, State Street. You're a second.
Second.
If you're ready to say aye.
I'm ready. Tom said it.
It's going to Wex Fuel Cards. Stephen, go back to old business, ordinance 2016, 112, personal rules and regulations. Anything to be brought up for on that? We already passed it. It's under old business also. Going to Wex Fuel Cards.
The 113 is under the new, the new business. That is the budget ordinance that Mr. Harper was talking about.
I read that name. That's the one I have up there.
You should have 112 as well.
I got 113. Is that the other one up there? One stuck up here. Okay, you have any questions on that? You're good.
If that's where we get the public hearing, though. So do we vote on, do we vote on if under old business?
Hey, Darrell.
Yes.
Darrell, we already did that.
Yeah.
All right.
There's that.
All right. Do you have any questions on this thing?
The 112?
That's 113.
That was the tractor.
Yeah, he already gave me that. I did have a question, yes, but he, it's on the tractor. I was just curious what was it, were payment, jump the road or something?
Okay.
If it's a tractor, if it's coming along the edges.
All right.
Yes, yes.
Go back to Wex Fuel Cards.
It's still being used by the owners.
We already did. Is that 112? I hear a motion to pass 113, a meeting. Second, if you're ready to say aye.
All right.
All right, Wex Fuel Cards. What was that for?
I'll take that one.
Card's what I was saying.
Wex sold out to another company. The company they sold out to actually has fees, a yearly, a yearly charge, their interest rate's not good, different things like that. So Wex contacted us and asked us if we would like to stay on with them through the NJPA program. That is a program that we are already a member of, so all we're doing is for them to continue with NJPA or sustain it going with the new company that Wex sold out. We just need to further contact through.
I make a motion to accept the Wex Fuel Cards. You're a second.
I'm a second.
If you're ready to say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Going to safety coordinator.
I don't know about this one, but I do.
When we had our special call meetings, Alderman and Anderson got into some issues with the OSHA and stuff with our new boom mower. After several conversations with our sister cities, we need a safety coordinator in place. I have not heard an answer back from, I don't know, state, but through my operator's license, I'm hoping that I can train our guys on the do's and don'ts of our mini X. We have to take classes for lawnmowers, everything. This is to get ahead of the 2016 or 17 OSHA requirements. So I guess I'm going to nominate myself to be the safety coordinator and oversee all the training on, I guess, our equipment at the time, that way.
Let me ask a question. There are some online, just a couple, three hours of training on these things offered through, I bet you, OSHA, something like that. And you probably have seen that. Be wise to get that type of thing. And this is a huge thing when you have a company, you've got people out there running equipment. You've got to have some type of a training program and make everyone sign up, you know, what they've learned. But I'm saying you could be schooled prior to even sharing it with them. Josh, just through some online, it's a right thing.
That's true. Well, actually, through my operator's license that I have, my personal business, it's going to, it's like we actually step above that. So that's what we're hoping.
Okay.
I don't want to have to sit through a bunch of classes that I already set through.
All I'm saying is there is kind of a little refresh, it's like a one-hour CE course or something like that. But anyway, good deal.
Will they cover a moving truck, too?
Yes, yeah, so you can contact a TMA all about. I think that was one of those, did they have that?
They had, he gave me a list of things and said, again, need somebody else to actually contact for some additional stuff. So I'm not sure which one.
The biggest issue is the new boom mower that we just purchased. It's not, it's a highly dangerous item and I don't think they want to take the risk showing, having a video out there that puts their neck on the line. So we haven't got any information back on that. I don't know what's going to happen.
It might be available through the actual implement company that sells that product, safety rules and start they.
$2,700 for them to come up here and give my class for that. And from what I've read back through my emails, it really is just basically a walkover their item. It doesn't, you don't get a certificate, you don't get anything. So I don't know if there's really anything training wise that you give from them coming up. I get to really understand why they do it. When you buy a new one, they'll come up and go over it with you. When you buy a used one, they won't charge you $2,700 and you don't get any certificates or anything. So you can basically say you've been walking around the machine. Through Cat, I thought everyone bought the mini X. They did the same thing. They walked around it with us, went over the do's and don'ts. When I contacted them about some kind of certificate for each one of our guys, saying, yeah, they've been told not to do this, not to do that, they won't stand behind me. So I'm taking this one to be in the same realm. Because you've got to walk through with no certificates, and that's what's going to really count.
God, I do assure you that if you purchase something such as even a weed eater, there is a set of things in there to say, be sure to do this, do that, and everything else. Nothing more than to have the brochure that comes out with the adjustable cutter that's up on the side. These things are really dangerous. And that's all I'm just cautioning the city on, is to make sure that we have whatever's available. Anyway, that's all I have to say about that.
Operator, anything? We actually, anybody knows how to operate that thing?
There's two of us sitting in a room at Cat. It ain't easy, his adjustment. And a 15-minute walk around, excuse me if I interrupted, but a 15-minute, 20-minute walk around from the people who sold it is not going to teach anybody how to operate it. It's going to have to be some hands-on learning, slow-paced hours of training before they can do it fluid.
We actually went over to our special call meeting, is a local farm, we're going to use to actually, I personally, we're having a new, a new overing kit put in. It's not getting proper flow to the heads, $200 kit, no big deal. We're actually wanting to see in operation to see how far the degree will be flung, be flung. That way our guys know safety parameters when it's being used, and that's something we are trying to get working on. But so, it's one of those things, we've got to get them to list for.
It's going to utility board.
Guess that falls back on me. I'd like to make the motion to advertise for a utility worker with a pay scale of $15 to $17 an hour to see, I know we just got, done hiring one. We obviously expanding, so I'd like to see if there are any more applicants out there that we could add to our departments.
I'd like to comment on that. I'd like to make sure that they're sewer qualified. As far as I generally feel, I don't want to have to sit there and go through all the training process of training another guy in sewer. Basically, it's been Josh and me doing the majority of it. It's getting old, so.
The only thing I think we need to do is start at 15, we need an upper range, depending on what type of person walks, you know, if we try to recruit or who we find. Because otherwise, if you get somebody that's actually got some background in, you're not going to give $15 to $17.
Well, that's what I thought after some phone calls to, once again, some of our sister cities, what they pay for operators, sewer techs and all that, where it's kind of.
Is that where they are?
Unless you're a special, unless you have a specialty, that's about what it costs for a utility worker. Mike and I were talking earlier, what it would cost to get a good guy in here, and we were just trying to bounce some numbers off of that. I don't know. I don't mind going 15 to 19.
I'd like to say that, that way we don't want to come back here and make another adjustment. You know, if we get the right person, we'll.
I'm not talking about sewer, you know, as far as certification or anything like that. I want somebody that's not knowledgeable with plumbing, knowledgeable with sewer work, and they can actually work on a live line. That's what I'm looking at. And, you know, when you talk about certification, everything later on down the road, because they have to go through the certification class anyway. So that would be, you know, it would be dependent on what they already know, what's already going in. If they already have certification, I agree with 100%. If that definitely increases them. If you want to do $15 to $19, $15 to $18.
They just may have $200, $200.
I think that would be pretty fair, you know, if you get somebody in here, that's good. And we're going to test them, because I'm not going to go through this training process. It's just to get them all real fast. And Alderman, Graydon, myself, it's been an awful lot of time out here in sewer holes.
The only thing I don't like about it is the, I think you've heard me say this before, I think our police officers, I mean, it'll be something where if you're starting with someone out in the department, even they got certification, I mean, when we hire a police officer, even though they've been a police officer before and have certifications, stuff like that, they start out, I think, I think I might say, and it's so much lower than what we're willing to pay a utility person. So that bothers me, you know, it bothers me to know that we're willing to start a brand new utility employee much higher than we start our police officers.
Well, I'm going to kind of argue with that a little bit, Tom. When Chief White come in here, he didn't start out at $15 an hour. He started out at, I'll throw out a $20 an hour rate for his skills. Our bottom range is exactly what our new officers start at, at $15 an hour. If this guy comes in, if we even get anybody to apply, and they have all the qualifications that are the knowledge that I'm looking for, then, you know, you're paying for experience at that point, and I don't want to run a guy off. I mean, you know, I know all the guys in the police department have gotten a raise within the last year, and the only, the only two that we had at $15 have been here less than a year, right? Everybody else is above that.
So our minimum price right now is $15, is that correct? And that was recently, if I'm not mistaken, happened?
Yes.
They'd already been here for some length of time and got a raise to 15, or did we start them at 15?
They come in at $14.50, they got a raise within two to three months, and that was oversight on personnel management. We thought it would have been raised up.
Two of them got a raise, Bill, Brad, and I believe he's going to be the officer my correct on that.
Well, actually, everybody, Dave has gotten a raise, Bill's got a raise, Tom's got a raise, I don't know who else, they've all gotten a raise.
They took the biggest jump, though. They got a dollar an hour, almost a dollar an hour raise, and we changed that to $15.
Yeah, the other guy's got a percentage raise.
Yeah.
But it's represented, Michael, is it going to be at 20 cents or?
No, well, the top three guys are doing, you know, Bill and Dave and Tomlin are all doing pretty well. They're, I think we've got to around 17. And now we're all.
Bill, Wiley, and Tomlin are above the mid-grade average. When you look across the pay scale of the state of Tennessee, they're in the top, upper percent. I don't have a better way to explain it, but they're better than midpoint of what everybody else is doing at that level.
And with that being said, I can look back when I was, like, we always had two guys. Look at what growth we've had in the past 10 years. We still have two guys, and, you know, it's.
That's what I'm saying, make care of watching them.
And the reason I'm pushing forward now is, yeah, Mike and I experienced it this week. We spent two nights out at eight o'clock. They just don't have the manpower. And that's where, that's why it's time to make a move. I mean, we've, you know, our sewer department's doing well. We need the help, we need the experience, and if it costs us $19 an hour, it is what it is.
Well, the president, 19, would be up there, write a certi, you know, certify.
Yeah, certainly. To me, we're going to make that motion.
Somebody certified.
We still, we're going to look back, not just on certi, we need an operator. We do, we do not have a qualified operator.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that we're going to need in this, this one particular person.
So we're going to have to bump it up, and like I said, I was at 15 to 17. I don't mind going 19, but, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to have a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge to put up that. So I don't need to reread that.
Well, if you made the motion, then I will second.
Well, let's, let's.
When are you going to make it 15 to 19?
Well, we have any other discussion on that like this? I mean, Mike, you wouldn't want to add as far as, well, list any criteria?
No, we can, no, no, not as far as.
He started pre first bank.
I'd like to make the motion to advertise a utility worker position with a pay scale of $15 to $19 an hour. You'd be published, please.
I'll try, you're second.
I will second. $20.
Oh, I'm ready to clear out.
I am.
No.
Check.
I see anything else on that? It's going to, next time we got to schedule workshop, October 17, 2016.
You've got to be there. That is the Monday before the.
Before the.
Do you have anything coming up next month? With our personnel being, no type going on.
Just 20 of your ideas.
I'll wait. I'll wait. Any sense of comments, Steve?
Actually, I have one for someone else. I stopped at the Shell on the way in to get a snack, and Mrs. Cobb was working, she lives back here on the highway back here, and she asked, would I please mention to the board that this water problem that keeps coming back behind the.
get a snack. And Mrs. Cobb was working, she lives back here on the highway back here. She asked if I please mention to the board that this water problem that keeps coming back behind the car wash out here is a real problem again. Would she like someone to look at it? Sorry. She gave me a discount, so I said, I promise.
The car washed today, it's her flight letter today, went out today.
Okay, perfect.
And so we're giving ten days to, to correct that problem.
Thank you.
And I ran into a neighbor, the dollars twenty-sixth, seven months. Except for he said to tell you, thank you that you have addressed the issue.
Any other citizens comments?
David Love, I spoke last month encouraging the board to look at the possibility of establishing a beer board. The property on the corner, since Mr. Manning has cleaned it off, it has brought some more interest into the community. But it's all predicated on the same thing that I said last week, or last month. There is a facility that is interested in acquiring that property to put a service station on it, put a, similar to the AMP here, or some other that would also have a food, fast food restaurant in it. But it's all going to be predicated on whether or not they can sell beer. Just so you guys know.
Any other citizens comments? Make a motion to plumb Thursday. On Thursday out?
Rose.